Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough of Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on December 4, 2019. And notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building and posted on the borough's website.
Let's go through the Zoom part.
Sure. This meeting will run just like any other council meeting. Our multimedia director, John Savia, will be controlling the attendees. When it comes time for the public comments section, please click the raise hand button. We will call on you one at a time. When you speak, please remember to state your name and address first. Thank you.
Thank you, April. If everybody could join me to salute the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice. Everybody could just have a moment of silence for our troops, their families, all our first responders, and all the healthcare workers that are dealing with this pandemic. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go into workshop. One of the things is we had a presentation from Verizon at the last meeting about how to Wi-Fi our beachfront and and the poles that are put up. So if Mr. Varga could give us a little bit of the legal background on what, I guess there are utility now, the cell towers, what they can do and what we would have to do to control what goes into our town, you know, the different points of it. And I don't know, I know Mr. Dasty's off tonight, but Patrick, if you could give us a little overview on these cell towers and what as, you know, what a town would have to do. I know we'd have to pass a resolution to set the standards, but do we have to do it? Or the whole law and the federal law and the state laws on cell towers? If you could just give us a little overview of that?
Of course, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make sure I'm coming in clear. I just received an email from April saying I was sounding a little staticy.
You are a little static, but we can hear you.
Can you get a little closer?
Yeah, I can speak louder, too. So the Federal Telecommunications Act, that's the federal statute that actually governs the installation of these cell towers as well as using 5G essentially blocks. Under that act specifically, 47 USC Section 332, it makes it unlawful for a municipality to have the effect of prohibiting the placement of these towers and use 5G installations. So as far as preventing them from coming into the borough, it would be unlawful for the borough to do so. However, that doesn't mean the borough has zero options. The borough is allowed to request certain parameters and if they're like the ordinance, they can ask for aesthetic reasons. They can ask that Verizon, in this case, install security cameras to better ensure the safety of the town. With respect to kind of the procedure of how all this goes, I try to keep it brief and understandable. First, Verizon had to present the borough with a master license with in communication with Mr. Bastian. He assured me we had no issues. However, after that, then it's on the borough to adopt a resolution. At this point, our office and Verizon is currently still in terms of negotiating the cameras. So that's kind of almost like a bump in the road as far as preventing us from proceeding. Once this sale made, this bump in the road is like resolved over to borough satisfaction, the borough would have to adopt a resolution authorizing the placement of the cell towers to the boroughs right away, which I understand to be along Ocean Avenue on each side to best prevent it from being right on top of the residential homes. Once the borough decides to adopt this resolution, under the federal statute and the New Jersey statute that it's projecting, it prevents a 60-day basically like a shot clock, which is like an expedited view for the planning board in order, which is just another administrative arm of the borough in permitting these cell towers to be implemented. But as far as to go back to the very last question that I addressed originally, there's nothing that we can do effectively to prohibit them because doing that would violate the federal statute and in turn, the New Jersey statute that is adopted as a result of it.
So at some point, we would have to do something so that we protect the town as far as aesthetics and height and everything that we could put in place under the resolution. But if we did nothing, they could eventually just put them in without coming to the town because we can't prohibit them, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. If any of the other council members have any questions for Mr. Varga? Just so we're clear on the law and what we have to do and, you know, I know these are going to be a little contentious because of the aesthetics and being up on Ocean Avenue and all that. So just so we got an overview of the law, what we can and cannot do. So I do appreciate that. All right. If anybody else doesn't have any questions for, we'll move on. Excuse me, Pat?
I'm sorry. You know what my internet's like. Is there a timeframe when it needs to go up?
I, what I take, what I take from Verizon, they want to have them up before next summer because of, you know, our broadband problem that we have down at the beach. And I guess they're trying to negotiate with all the towns right now and to see which town would be first to set the standard for the aesthetics. And then I guess the rest of us would have to follow. According to Verizon, they want to do this from Sandy Hook all the way down to Cape May on the beachfront. So, you know, do we, are we the first ones to set the standard? Or do we let another town set the standard for us? So that's the thing that we're looking at.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So Mr. Varga, as you're aware, Verizon proposed 21 poles, one on each block going from the Avon Bridge down to Avon. Do we have any control over the number of poles that they're interested in putting up or the type of enhanced communication equipment? I guess my question is, is it possible to negotiate with them for different options? Or are we really, are tans really tied as to what they feel they have to put in to have adequate service?
That's a good question. But so our teams aren't necessarily tied as far as what we can and what we cannot limit. But we have to go back to the original statute on the Federal Telecommunications Act that says we can't have the effect of prohibiting. So I'm not going to proudly pretend I'm an engineer or I understand exactly how many poles they need. Let's say if 21 is the bare minimum amount of poles that they need or the amount of poles that they require to be installed so that we don't have the effect of prohibiting the equal, I sense, equal competition amongst the other 5G carriers, then that's the amount that we have to permit. So the purpose of the telecommunications act was to kind of maintain a status quo amongst all the carriers. So if one carrier is able to install 5G cell phone towers, say in Long Beach Island, but Verizon doesn't have a big presence in Long Beach Island, I'm speaking hypothetically, but they have a large presence in Belmar, by preventing Verizon's from installing these poles in Belmar, we would be impeding the status quo of competition and thereby violating the statute. Where our power comes in is when it gets some in our resolution as far as like requesting certain aesthetic values. I wouldn't be surprised if, again, in hypothetical terms, we don't want a big pink block box sitting right on top of the beach. It doesn't look good to anyone. But if there's a way to make these boxes, say like painted with murals, and I don't know, I don't have the exact answer for this, just to make them a little bit more pleasing to the eye, those are things that we could possibly consider in negotiating with Verizon.
You brought up something that was discussed at the last meeting with, you know, other carriers coming in. You know, we have a proposal by Verizon, you know, what if some other carrier wanted to do the same thing, you know, can, you know, it could get rather expansive and expensive with the number of poles going in. And then what, what control do we have over like the town as far as where else they may decide to, you know, put the service like down main streets or residential areas, you know, things like that?
So one of the limits that we have authority for is we can limit them to only being placed in right of way. And if I recall correctly, I believe the telecommunications act often does provision indicates that it's on poles that have already previously been erected. So if it's like utility poles that are already pre-existing in the right of way, those are kind of open game. As far as preventing other telecommunications companies from coming into Belmar, that's an issue that I am not fully prepared to answer directly to you right now, which I can research and come up with a more descriptive answer. However, my understanding at this point, which I would be comfortable to say is, I think the way it works with these boxes, ATT could possibly bounce off of. Or, but it just depends like who's making the most money off of it. So I'm sure there's ways for telecommunications companies to all work together in order to limit having one of these on every single corner throughout the borough. But as far as how they would do that, I'm not exactly, I don't have a correct answer for you. And I don't want to mislead you in any way.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to echo your comment. I like the idea that if Verizon's going to do this all up and down the coast, we would actually, if we are willing to go work with them and work with them, we could control the style rather than let some other town go first and we get stuck with, because you would have to assume that Verizon's really going to try to keep their costs down by basically putting in the same kind of units everywhere. So I think that that's a really good point. One other thing, I think, I would feel more comfortable if we had a real answer, a really definitive answer about what happens with other providers. Because if it's basically between whoever gets there first and whoever wants to come in and try to use their equipment, they can work that out themselves. But we don't want a situation where every provider comes in and just says, okay, we're just going to put up our poles and you can't stop us. I mean, we don't want that to happen. They would still have to abide by whatever ordinance we have set up for the first installation. But, you know, we don't want to see litters of poles up and down Ocean Avenue. Nobody wants to see that. So I would appreciate if we could, Mr. Vargas, just take a look and see if we can get a more definitive answer of what exactly happens with providers who come in after the first provider set up the equipment.
Absolutely. I'll look into that and I'll definitely supply the borough first with a memo. And in our next meeting, if I'm covering it or if Mr. Dasty's back, I'm sure Mr. Dasty would be able to address any concerns that you or any member of the public has.
Thank you, Patrick. All right. If anybody else has any questions, maybe our business administrator, Kirshenbaum, could go over what's going on for the end of the summer and what we're moving towards with COVID and, and moving forward through September with our beachfront.
We had a departmental meeting with our department head yesterday to discuss beach operations after Labor Day. We've been in touch with other municipalities along the shore area. We've been in touch with Monmouth County Freeholders in regards to the care funding. And we've tried to include everybody in the planning phase of what we're going to do after Labor Day. We've met with the beach directors. One of the problems that we have is that we looked into charging to maintain the beach staying open until two weekends into the month or till the end of September. In meeting with the beach director and all the other department heads, we do not have staff available after Labor Day to properly take care of the beach, to man the gates and the bathrooms, the lifeguards. So at this time, we are not charging. We did a survey. I know that Avon is going to be open two weekends, two weekends after Labor Day, first weekend, September 12th and 13th, and September 19th to 20th, where badges are required during that time. And Spring Lake is not charging and will have limited lifeguards. We'll be covered by expenses, working with the county on the CARES Act. Where we're going, I met with Chief Scott and her department, where we're going to actually follow our beach COVID plan that we started on Memorial Day with police protection on the beaches for the four quadrants, the four sectors, with Department of Public Works. If Director Campbell can get a staff together to make sure that we maintain the beach, because people will, like they do with local summer, they do get on the beach if the weather is nice. So we are going to have our DPW, our law enforcement down there because we're still under the executive order for COVID, for social distancing. We're going to have the police down there. We'll have Department of Public Works, like I said. And we're going to have, although lifeguards are off duty, we'll have a limited staff down there taking care of their gear. So we're trying to protect the beach the best we can possible. That's the whole process. If we had the staffing to open up the beach, it was a, it was discussed that we would charge for the weekend after Labor Day and the following weekend. But we just do not have the staff. And that's one of the problems that we're facing for the beach.
Got our mute, Mayor. Mayor, come here, please. Standby. You got it?
Yeah, I had it muted on my speaker here as well. So when you say we don't have the staff, is that the staff to, like, beach badge chambers? Do we have lifeguard staff at all?
We don't have gate attendants. We don't have our beach director who actually have his individuals man the booths to sell the badges. We do have lifeguards. Harry Horson is working on getting a staff together to work from the public safety complex down there. Because realistically, listen, if it's, if it's hot down there in September, morally, we have to make sure we have people down there for public safety. So it's all public safety process going on. Because of COVID, there's going to be people here. We're getting reports in about schools not starting till September 16th. That means that we're going to still have people coming to Belmar and to other locations throughout the Jersey Shore. So we do have lifeguards. We're working on all that. Like I said, we had a departmental meeting yesterday. We're trying to get bathroom attendants down there. So we maintain for the group of people that's going to be down there. And then Chief Scott has told me that they will have adequate staffing with police officers to maintain social distancing and enforce borough ordinances, state statutes, anything police related on the beachfront, on the boardwalk and down on Ocean Avenue and throughout the town. So those are the things. It's a tough decision. You know, we're trying to do the best we can with the unprecedented times. But we're working through it and we're talking to the other towns. And we're trying to make sure that we keep everybody safe and do the best we can with COVID-19 situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for a business administrator?
This is Jim. Yeah. So Ed, just to be clear on what you're saying, I think I understand it fully. But we do not have the adequate staff necessary to be gate attendants to work at the entrances on each beach. So therefore, you know, we can't charge residents to come because we can't, we can't control that. We don't have enough people to sit at the gates. But we do have enough, we will have enough police presence to enforce social distancing on the beach, control crowds, control behaviors, control people who are complying with our local ordinances, as well as crew of lifeguards to the best of our ability, be able to, you know, watch the water, make sure residents are safe, as well as folks to keep the restrooms open and clean during this pandemic. So really, what we're, what we just, we don't have is, we don't have the ability to charge because we don't have the gate attendants. Is that correct? But otherwise, we have enough people to control crowds, monitor the water to the best extent possible, and make sure the restrooms are clean and sanitized.
Right. We don't have the professional staff for the sales as well as the gate attendants. So we do not have that, that ability. But we're trying to get the public safety aspect and the executive order COVID stipulations that are out there to maintain control on the beachfront, on the boardwalk and down on Ocean Avenue and other parts of the town. Because like I said, people are not traveling still. They're not, schools, who knows what's going to happen with schools. Some are opening later, some are virtual. So we're going to have people on nice, nice days, go to the beaches all along the Jersey Shore. And we have to remember September is hurricane season. Tropical storm is already forming that we have to concern ourselves with right now. So the protection of everybody that do go to the beach is paramount, and that's what we're working on now. If we had the staff, we have talked about charging, but we just do not have the staff for gates or the sale of badges on the beachfront.
Okay. And to offset these additional costs, we're going to apply for some CARES Act funding through Monmouth County. And I would assume I also looked at the latest beach report. You know, our revenues this summer were very good and surpassed last year. So if that funding wasn't available, we would have money from the beach utility to be able to offset these costs. There will be no additional burden to the taxpayers.
Yes, sir. In talking to Freehold Director Tom Arnon and his team, we maintain contact with them weekly. They know what's coming in September. They realize where we're at. So they're, they're giving us great information that CARES Act will cover what we need to do above and beyond what we've done before because of COVID-19 situations. So we're working through that. And that's, that's where we're at with everything. We're making sure that we can file the executive orders for COVID with our police officers, with some limited public safety staff down the beachfront with the boardwalk and on the beach.
Anyone else?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate having this discussion. I met with some residents this week, and this was one of the first things they asked me about. So I appreciate the business administrator's explanation. I do have a couple of questions, though, two, three things. All right. Why aren't we, if we can't have the staff to man the entire sales process of all the booths and all the gates, why don't we run like a limited setup where it's only one or two booths and there's only a few gates that people can actually have access to the beach? Is that a possibility?
If, if we're going to open the beach and charge, we have to do it the right way. So we have to adequately staff the gates because if we charge and we don't have enough lifeguards, people could wander to beaches that are unprotected. People are expecting to be protected on, when they enter the waters. It's a tough time in September with, with some of the currents, some of the storms that we have brewing right now. We can't keep people off the beach. We can't because of public trust doctrine, that beach has to stay open. So we can't close the beach. And if we're going to do it, we have to do it the right way. If we're charging people, the services have to be there. We need the bathrooms to be fully staffed. We need the lifeguard and each beach to be fully staffed. You're correct. We, it's either do it the right way or we can't do it at all.
Thank you. I just want to be clear. I mean, people, we can say you can only go on this gate, this gate, this gate. But once they're on the beach, they can basically go wherever they want. We can't stop them from doing that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. You and I had discussed the possibility of what if it's, if it's so bad, because this was my nightmare that I shared with you, is like Avon was charged on the weekend, Spring Lake, thank God. But they, what if they were and Belmar got hammered with all the people who didn't want to have to pay? And could we even just close the beach completely? And I'd like to share with me your thoughts on that.
We have no right to close the beach due to the public trust doctrine. People have the right to go to the beach. What we have to do based on executive orders is try to maintain public safety concerns on that beachfront because of the situation that we're in right now. So we can't just, just close the beach down. There are beaches that are charging. They're, and like you said, Spring Lake, they're not charging at all. They're going to have a limited staff on their beachfront, is what I've been told. So Memorial Day, if we normally then start charging after the 15th or 16th of June, we charge from Memorial Day all the way through in hopes of keeping people off of our beach by charging. The other towns around us were not charging. They came to Belmar anyhow. So even though there were free beaches, they still came to Belmar. So it's half six of one, half a dozen of the other, no matter what is the right call. All we can do is work within the parameters that we have with the staff that we have and, and try to do the right thing that way.
Thank you. So just to be clear, I mean, we really, we, we don't have the right to close the beach because we don't want people going on there for whatever reason, you know? Okay. As long as it's not a, all right. So one other question. I'm sorry, one other question. I have an email from Pam Plummer. The notice went out today, I got it too, that we need to have everything out of the lockers by September 15th. And she's asking if there's any way we can back off on that date because as a seasoned badge holder, locker renter, they've, it's been a tough summer for them. They don't feel like they've gotten their money's worth because the overpopulation on the beach, you know, was too much. And I can understand her, her concern. And I was just wondering, is that a possibility either? Or why are we doing the 15th?
I'll explain that to you. More days in September. Like I said previously, it is hurricane season. The Department of Public Works, we only get a short period of time for notice to get those lockers off the beach and secure for the winter time. We can't have a storm come up and wipe out our lockers. So it's either we keep the lockers on for a few more days or we have the locker for 2021. So we can't afford them to get damaged. Department of Public Works takes them quite, quite some time to get them off. If we have a storm, we would never be able to get them off. So pretty, pretty fixed on the 15th. We understand it's unprecedented. We, we feel for everybody. But in the matter, in the course of doing business, we have to get them off the beachfront because we can't risk them being destroyed in any of the storms that are actually brewing right now. There's one in the Gulf. There's, there's, like I said, September, October, that's hurricane season. So that's why we're pretty secure in getting them off the beach. As well as all the other equipment. The lifeguard stands, everything else like that. Michael?
Yeah, the other problem, Tom, is the beach fence. Beach fence has to get put up for the storms and for the winter. So by the time we get all the lockers off, we have very limited time to get that down if there is any windstorms, anything like that. It's not just the lockers. Eddie's correct, it is the lockers. It takes a long time. We have to separate them to see what work has to be done. We have to put them away. But again, the beach fence has to get put up in order to protect the beaches for the winter. And we have a very limited slot to do that.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the answers to my questions. And I must say, I'm very happy to hear that Spring Lake's not going to be charging. And I'm more than anticipating telling people, hey, you should go to Spring Lake. Go over there and check it out. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a couple of comments, Council President, that I want to make. One, the biggest problem that we had for not charging was our, our beach director and his assistants are all school teachers. So they were not available to even do scheduling or anything down at the beachfront. And we don't have the personnel to figure out how to do the scheduling down there. And, and the other comment that you make, like if we, we have a big influx of people, we are going to be treating the beach just, just as we did all summer. Sections of it will be getting closed off if we cannot control social distancing. And that will be done by police department and some of the DPW workers. And we'll watch that daily. So we're going to keep that, you know, all the things that we have down there to close, close sections off if we cannot control social distancing. It's unfortunate that we cannot charge because, you know, I was the one who said that I would rather be charging. But after talking to the breach director, all the assistants and what goes into opening our beach, it's, it's almost impossible to charge. And, and the lifeguards have a minimum staff, minimal staff that they're going to keep down there to try to watch the water. So it's going to be a challenge. And we know people don't have anywhere to go. So, and with the nice days in September, if we have some nice days, like I said before, they come right down 195, 195, and they're coming to the Belmar beach. We've seen it all summer long. The, the weathermen say it's going to be a beautiful day, and we know. The, the weathermen say it's going to be a beautiful day and we know we're going to have, we're going to have people coming to our beach. So if that helps you out on a couple of the questions. The biggest thing was, was our, our beachfront director and his whole staff are all school teachers and they have to be back to work. So and we had nobody else to handle all the scheduling and do everything that they do.
The other thing, if I, if I can, Mr. Mayor, if any of the people on the Friendship Force, we had 15, 16 great volunteers that worked with us all summer long. We still have that part in our plan. We still have our drone and we still have our observation areas just to maintain like the mayor says, all we did all summer long. So any of the Friendship Force people, we'll be reaching out to them probably tomorrow to see what their availability is after Labor Day. So thank you.
Okay. If nobody has anything else, anything else for workshop, we'll move on. All right. Petitions, April?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Approval to minutes, August 18th.
Could I have a motion to approve the August 18th minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yeah.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
I'm staying.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Mayor Walsfer?
Yes. Okay. Reports of council, Councilman Carvelli?
Thank you, Mayor. It continues to be a quiet summer as far as committees and whatnot. The Harbor Commission had been rescheduled because of the 8/11 council meeting that we scheduled last month. So that got pushed. The BVP meeting was also postponed as well. So not much activity there. I do have a, an update on, on the website. You know, it's a work in progress. They're working to make it more user friendly. Like was said previously, it now works on mobile. I haven't actually checked it, so I'm not sure about the, the experience, but I'm sure that any feedback is welcome. You know, anybody that finds anything that is wrong or needs updating or dead links or what have you, you know, just reach out to, to the website team or send it to me and I'll route it to the proper person. But other than that, they're working hard on it and it takes time. So bear with us and I think over time it'll, it'll, it'll end up being a, a good, a good site and a good resource. So thank you for that. And that is my report for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Juan?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a short ADA meeting last week. Todd, we're back on schedule for the 17th of September. And Michael Nunez, if you're listening, please call me regarding the email that I sent you. We're going to do a nice report about the ADA and what the ADA does and all the things that we offer for the people of Belmar. So that'll be in the newspaper. Also, just going into Labor Day as far as community policing goes, please remember, even though it's a holiday and I know it's the last weekend of the summer and we could be happy, please call the police if there's a problem. Don't not call the police. Don't be afraid to. And when you do call, please make sure that you notify your block captain or your zone chief of the phone call that you made because we have a very good record of the houses that were a problem this summer. And we, we've got a pretty good record with community police and we want to keep it up. And the police are there to help you and try and do their best. And I have a feeling this is going to be a wild woolly weekend because it is the last blast, so to speak. So please continue to call the police if there's a problem. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCracken?
Thank you, Mayor. The Shade Tree Commission has been hard at work. We're in the process of finalizing a date to meet with Business Administrator Kirschenbaum to go over, refine some logistical processes when it comes to processing the applications and getting back to people in a timely manner. So that meeting will be scheduled within the next couple of weeks, which we're excited about. The Belmar Housing Authority meets on the first Monday of the month, which this year is actually falls on Labor Day. So that meeting is rescheduled for Tuesday, September 8th at 5:15, either at the Housing Authority or by Zoom, to be determined. If you don't mind, I just have one question for Councilman Carvelli with the, the website. One of the things I think that we're all very proud of is the amount of transparency we've increased with this government into getting documents posted on our website and available to folks. But it's been also very challenging with our current website sometimes to negotiate that and find documents easily. So as you are redoing the website, are you taking that into consideration and will be organized in the, the future in, in a manner where it will be potentially easier for our residents to navigate?
Yeah, I mean, I, hold on one second. All right.
No, I can hear you.
Yeah, I would think that that is ultimately the goal. That is an underlying kind of plugin, if you will, of, of the site, which probably needs to be revamped over time. But the primary goal right now is to port all of the information to a new platform, fix all the broken links and get everything organized and easily searchable as far as all the different resources and departments and whatnot. But yes, as far as documentation goes, I, I know recently we, we just updated to a new, a new service or portal with linkage for, for all of the, the codes and ordinances of the town and that's searchable and that's, that's a link out. But as far as, and I think maybe April, you can clarify. I mean, when there's Oprah requests, is that stuff ending up on there as well?
Yes, if you go to the Oprah Request button, you can see, you can search documents that have been routinely requested. So there's that option. And then under the ordinance section is also where we posted all the financial documents. So it's all in one place.
So as far as being able to search everything all at once right now, I think it may be a little disjointed and based on what it is you're, you're looking for. But over time, I'm sure that'll be something that gets tackled.
Okay, great. And last, Mayor, for our report, you know, I just wanted to bring up, I know at the last meeting and other meetings, you know, residents have offered recommendations for the Animal House Ordinance for strengthening that, that ordinance and, you know, some good recommendations have been provided. And I know that our municipal attorney and the Borough Administrator have been working on that. So you know, looking forward to seeing any future drafts in the future with revisions we can make to that ordinance to, if possible, to tighten it up any further and, and you know, keep, keep our neighborhoods as tranquil as, as possible. So I want to appreciate you directing them to look into that and you know, look forward to working that, looking at future options and as, as they become available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add my two cents about the website. The portal for finding ordinances, I found that one of the most cumbersome things about the old website was looking for ordinances, trying to find them and how to look for them. The portal works, works really well and Borough Clerk April Claudio told me about an app called Ecode Search. And I, since I've been using that, I've had no trouble finding any, any number of different ordinances. It's much easier to get information. It makes it easier for me to answer questions from residents when they ask me, what about this and what about that? So that's been a real help. Ecode Search. My report is both, I have to do a few shout outs and I'm going to give my beach report first. I've been part of the Friendship Force. And I've been down at the beach the last two weekends. This past weekend, not on Saturday. It, things are going really pretty well. The beach is not anywhere as near as busy as it was in July. The people are still socially distancing on the beach. We haven't gotten close to reaching our cap. There's still plenty of room for people, our cap of daily sales. It's, it's really, since we put the cap in, it's been a lot easier down at the beach for the staff and I think for the residents and the visitors too. I mean, things aren't perfect, but that's, it's still better than it was. And I'm happy to say that. A couple of shout outs, not this yesterday, but Monday last week, I got to go down and take part in the Monday night beach cleanup. It's organized by Colleen Solven Paulus. I want to thank her for doing that. It's not a really organized cleanup. She just basically says, everybody show up, go to your beach on Monday night and wear a green shirt and pick up the garbage on your beach. And one of the things I want to make sure I, I am clear about is I think DPW does a great job cleaning our beach. They empty the cans all the time. It's really, really, they're right on top of it. And they rake the beach with our beach rakes every single day. The things that I found myself picking up are the things that the rake can't get. Straws, cigarette butts and bottle caps, plastic bottle caps. Little bits, bits of plastic things here and there. That's almost everything I pick up. And that's, I feel like it's a chance to do my bit and it's just an hour on a Monday night on the beach. I can't really complain about that. So a big shout out to Colleen. Thanks for organizing that. A resident told me about another resident named Jim Murray. He's a surfer. He helped save a couple of kids that were in the water, actually were on the jetty. And we're having real difficulty getting down. He, he broke his board, but he was still able to help the kids in before the lifeguards are able to get there. So a big shout out to him. Going to give a shout out to Chief Scott because I heard again from the residents out at Rhode Island Point, how happy they are about the stepped up enforcement of the speed limit on 16th Avenue. They really appreciate it. They're, they are really, they're thrilled. And even just on the way over here, I know some of the residents about 8th Avenue have been concerned about people flying through the stop sign at E. So now we have those smaller stop signs in the street just to reinforce the fact that people have to stop there. And again, a big shout out to the chief for making that happen. That's really, really good. And that's my report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Council President Brennan. I just have a couple of things. The school, with school reopening, we're lending our sanitizing robot to them. It's a robot that goes in each classroom, takes about, you hit the button and in about 15 minutes, it sanitizes the whole room with ultraviolet light and a couple of the things that the robot has. And they're able to take it to each classroom to sanitize. So we're lending them that. And I know the school's been working really hard to try to make everything safe for the opening and you know, I know DPW has been helping them out, trying to move some furniture out, so they can social distance and so we're, we're looking into seeing how the opening is for the school and watching that closely. But so far, so good. And it looks like they, they should be opening some virtual and some in classrooms. So they, they have a whole setup for that. So hopefully they could do that. I just want to say about our summer employees and all the employees in the borough. I mean, it has been a crazy summer. But I mean, every employee that we had worked hard, they put their heart and soul into this summer to make it possible for the beach to open and, and try to make it as comfortable as possible for everybody. And I just want to say that one good thing, all of our employees were COVID free for the whole summer. So I'm really happy to say that, that down at the beach so far, we, we didn't have that problem. That was one of the big worries that we had that make sure employees were safe. So I know we have another weekend to go and I hope I'm not speaking too soon, but we're almost through the summer and everything worked well, everything that we put in place. So I, I really want to thank everybody and I want to thank the residents. I mean, you know, tensions were high. We had the storm come through, didn't have power. And it was, it was a tough summer. It was a tough summer for everybody and tensions were high, but we're getting through it. And I pray and pray that this is the last summer we have to go through that. But thank you, everyone. And I really do appreciate all the employees down there and all of our employees for working so hard. So that's all I have. So we'll move on to public session on any of the resolution items.
Okay, I'll be looking for hands. Standby.
If anyone from the public wants to comment on any of the resolutions only, click the raise hand button.
Okay, I see one hand. Standby. Mr. Kramer, coming to you. Mr. Kramer, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I just have a question about these liquor licenses. I see some wording was added. Basically what it says is added a condition, the license premises must comply with all state, county and local health regulations. Was that put into the liquor licenses because of the pandemic that we had this year?
Yes, and just so that we make sure that they comply with all the health regulations. And if they don't, not only does the Health Department sanction them, the borough would be able to sanction them also. But just to make sure that they're complying with everything.
Yeah, okay. I guess that leads to my next question here. You know, that was state, county and local. What about the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act? Is that a requirement for the drinking establishments to be compliant with the ADA?
I'm sure that any, anything, I mean, most, a lot of them are grandfathered, but anything that's new would have to, have to comply with all that.
Okay, thank you very much. And I guess there's a different threshold. In other words, if somebody repaves their parking lot and puts new lines in there, then, then they have to install ADA compliant parking spaces and so on. How about the buildings themselves? I'm just curious as to whether, whether these establishments are accessible to people in wheelchairs and so on.
I, I think that if any, any kind of updating, they would, they would have to comply with all ADA requirements. So I'm not sure, I'm not the, the construction official, but I'm sure that they, they, they make sure that they're complying on anything new that they're putting in. I would have to ask, I'd have to ask our construction official, but I'm, I'm sure that that, that would be the case.
Yeah. Is there any reason why ADA cannot be a standard condition? In other words, just compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act? And whether something triggers an action or not, that's something on the side. But just putting it as a general condition, I don't see why it should, I don't see how anybody could have any objection to it.
As far as a condition to their license?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask the attorney and, and because, you know, licenses are grandfathered, even though they're, a lot of them are not compliant until they do something or build something, then they have to be in compliant. I know I'm pretty sure that that's what it is. But if our attorney could just answer that for us, I appreciate it.
Mr. Kramer, that was a good question. So just so I can understand, to be clear, you want as a condition on any license approval that the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act is a condition on any future approval. Is that correct? Yes. So there's also the New Jersey's American with Disabilities Act. So as the mayor explained, in the event it's a new construction or a new renovation, any use in future has to be compliance with any, any state, local and county statutes and regulations. So it is in a way already included through the New Jersey American with Disabilities Act, which is just essentially a very similar provision as the American with Disabilities Act enacted by our federal, federal government.
Yeah, absolutely. That that's I I think what's necessary here. Uh and and uh not that I I visit these establishments or go inside, but passing their parking lots and so on. Uh perhaps it, like I said, it should be included in the liquor license, even if it's just a reminder. Uh just a suggestion and just a recommendation and I don't see any reason uh why it can't be just a standard condition. I mean, we have another places going on in town here right now with uh liquor licenses and modifications being done to the building and and certainly modifications being done to parking spaces. Uh you know, e- even over in the Belmar Plaza over there, uh quite a few of the handicap parking spaces have been uh and I don't have any objection to this, by the way, uh the restaurants have been able to move outside in order to to uh in order to serve food and I think that's fine, but that's a temporary condition. Um I I just think it would be, if if you're gonna put this as uh this recommendation that, I should say, this uh added condition that was just put into, and I guess this is gonna apply to all liquor licenses, um about complying with all state, county and local health regulations, why not just add compliance with Americans with Disability Act? And and I do know that New Jersey had adopted uh in full the, all the federal uh regulations, just as a standard condition.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer. Standby. I see one more. Robert, a moment. And now he's gone. Hold on, please. Robert, if you're there, uh oh, they are. Came back in again. Standby, Robert, are you there?
I am here.
There you are, sir. Go ahead.
Uh as far as the Disability Act goes, it is enforced. There is no-
Bob, just uh if you just give your name and address and uh how you're employed with the Borough of Belmar.
Yes, I am employed, uh code enforcement, 601 Main Street, Belmar. As Mr. Kramer, uh everything that is new must comply with the Disability Act. Uh anything that is, you know, grandfathered in does not have to, but if they do renovations, that they must comply with the, you know, Disability Act. So all the new buildings that are going in do comply with the Disability Act.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I see no more hands.
Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolutions listed on consent agenda number one?
Motion.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have consent agenda number two, Councilman Brennan will abstain from. So we can have a motion to approve the resolutions on consent agenda number two.
Motion.
Okay, Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next we have for first reading and introduction ordinance 2020 34. This is a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various capital equipment. Do we have a motion to offer for first reading and introduction?
Motion.
Make the motion.
You have a second?
Aye.
Okay, Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes. Okay, moving on to public session. So anybody that wants to speak to the public, just raise your hand.
And please remember to state your name and address.
Okay, I'm waiting for some hands to populate, but we will start with Arnold, coming to you, please. Standby.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Arnold, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Arnold Lakin and I live at 209 9th Avenue. Uh my wife's family has lived in Belmar for most of the last 80 years. Um our house unfortunately is next to the sandcastle and I was pleased to see that there's an effort to strengthen uh the animal house ordinance, but I just want to talk to you about one aspect of it. There are times where I've complained and both the police and the borough administrator have been great. They've been responsive, they've been helpful and they've gotten out and solved the problem quickly. And I really do appreciate it and feel they should be commended for the great effort they've made. The problem is, I'm not convinced this is necessarily a police problem for two reasons. One, I find that my, my, that I and my children and grandchildren are often awakened at 3:00 AM with the noise and even though the police come out and address the problem, you know, when you reach my age, 70, you're not falling back to sleep if you're awakened at 3:00 AM. The other problem is, I find I I'm limited in the portions of my house I can use because if I go onto the front porch, when there are a lot of kids there, it's just intolerable to stay there. Um and I was wondering that if in connection with the ordinance, you might consider a provision that required a property owner, if there are two verified complaints by by police presence, that they would be required to hire a security officer for weekend evenings to stop the problems before they begin. Because again, while everyone in the borough has been great, um once you're awakened in the middle of the night, i- it's a problem. Uh so I would hope that's something you might consider for the ordinance. I've not seen the ordinance. I happen to be an attorney and I know Mr. Dasty and Mr. Varga. Um I've not seen the ordinance, but I hope that is something you might consider or some other alternative to control the problem before it requires a police presence. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, under the animal house ordinance, uh once they have three convictions or two convictions?
Um it's two convictions. Uh the problem is, is this property is a bed and breakfast. It's not a summer rental, so the animal house provision would not apply.
All right, well, maybe we maybe we could ask uh Mr. Dasty to take a look into that and and uh we could add that if we can. Uh I know we have to, we have to go by the, what the state law is, but uh maybe that's one of the provisions that we could take a look at. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. A moment, coming to Kathy. Kathy, you there?
Hi, good evening. Uh my name's Kathy Bonjone and I live on 16th Avenue, 410 16th Avenue. Earlier in the summer, um I have reached out to the community policing program, which by the way, I think is absolutely amazing, um so responsive to my concerns and my needs. And um after a concern with the property that's next door to me um on 16th Avenue, the mayor, Pat and Frank Sinelli came out to take a look at the property and what was going on there. And I have to first of all, give a shout out to Frank Sinelli for his tireless efforts in trying to keep that property at least clean and um under control in terms of the overcrowding and the furniture that's everywhere on the property. Um he's been fantastic. And for the month of July, I was actually optimistic that things were improving, but recently, um the the renters have become unbearable again. And um in looking at just, just today at the animal house or houses that you have on your website, I see that this house next door to me is now considered an animal house. And I was, I guess my question is to Chief Scott, which by the way, thank you so much for responding to my email and I want to acknowledge, I appreciate everything the police in town have done. Now that we know that I believe they're an animal house, because I see the the address on this list, can we for um Labor Day weekend, have a police officer there um to, similar to the previous caller, stop them before they wake me up and before they are screaming and carrying on and throwing their garbage onto my property?
Yes, we are planning on adding that address to the list that we're going to uh post this weekend. Um the the issue I had and the confusion in the email, two of the summonses were issued on the same incident. Um I did not realize there was a rear house um that received that ticket. So it's now showing three, so it's two separate incidents. So it's gonna be added to the list to uh be posted this weekend.
Great. Thank you. I cannot thank Pat, uh mayor, Frank Sinelli, you guys have just been wonderful. I cannot thank you enough for everything you've done.
You're welcome. Pleasure, Kathy.
Thank you so much, Kathy. One moment. Coming to Linda Sharkis, standby. One moment, Linda. Let's see. There we go. Linda, go ahead, please.
Okay, Linda Sharkis, 4th Avenue. There are two points I'd like to bring up this evening. The first one is regarding uh Councilman McCracken's comment about all the poles for the the tell cell towers on Ocean Avenue. Um I was reflecting on that situation and if we have a couple different providers coming in, it would be nice if all the poles were the same. So I would think the first one in, putting up 21 of the same poles is much better than having two providers putting up different kind of poles. And that's what I'm wondering is the approach, so the second provider would be paying for space on Verizon's pole. And I think overall, it would be better for the community than having two different ones that, you know, we could at least work on the second, a piggyback one, controlling what goes on top of the said Verizon poles, if that's the direction we move. My second comment is, um on Facebook, somebody posted a picture of a woman with a walker trying to get on the beach. And we've had a very successful summer and I I would like to think we have some money to get Mobi um walk pathways for all the beaches so that somebody could have the ease of walking to join their family on the beach. So I don't know if that's something that's-
We will have every beach covered next year. We're we're gonna make sure that we have every beach will have one of the mats uh next year. We're gonna do them all.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate all you've done to keep us safe this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. One moment, please.
So I actually have something with the, with the 5G poles, it sounds like we do have some control over the aesthetics. So even if a second provider came in, can we require them to use the same pole or the same whatever, shell to the pole?
We can.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I will be going back to hands now and we see Sherry, standby. Ready to go? Sherry, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sherry Russo, 1218 Briarwood Road in Belmar. I'm very concerned that the same attorney, Mr. Dasty, who told us in this council that there was no pay to pay violations months ago in Belmar, is now involved in another pay to play scandal in Tom's River. Too often, when myself or other members of the co- of the public bring issues to this council, we are belittled and dismissed. Mr. Dasty did just that when members of this council and the mayor were notified of the pay to play violations. We deserve better from our elected officials and the professional that they pay with our tax dollars. Will you commit now to doing right by the people of Belmar and terminate Mr. Dasty's contract with the town immediately? We don't need to import any more scandals, we have plenty already. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looking for hands, we see a Mark. A moment, please, Mark. Mark, go ahead, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Mark Levis, 904 13th Avenue in Belmar. Um mayor and council, I just wanted to bring something to your attention that I discovered in an Oprah request I made. I want to be very clear that I'm not accusing the mayor and council of any wrongdoing um in my, in my statement, but I think it's important that you guys are aware of some things that happened in the past administration and I would hope that you guys would, would investigate some things that uh that, you know, have come to light. So I just want to lay, you know, one, one initial fact and that's that in January of 2018, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Kirschenbaum entered into an agreement which allowed Mr. Kirschenbaum to dock his boat at Belmar Marina, Dock H Slip 31 for no charge. This agreement was contingent upon the borough proving permitted to utilize this vessel in an emergency. However, I can't find any ordinance or resolution which granted the Director of Public Works any authority to enter in this type of agreement. Now, I understand the mayor and council were not present at the time when this agreement was was happening. I happen to be chairman of the Harbor Commission when this agreement took place and I was unaware of this, this act. I can't understand why this type of agreement would have been made and if it was such a good agreement, why it wasn't continued in 2019. In April of 2019, the council approved a resolution which created some as is rates for the Belmar Marina. This gave some really significant discounts to some slips that were already occupied. One of those slips was already occupied by Mr. Kirschenbaum, the same one he had paid nothing for the year prior to. So I'd like to understand who in 2019 was responsible for creating that list of undesirable slips? I'd like to know why the slips were created in the first place. If you had a marina that wasn't full, if you still had 30 and 35 foot slips, why would you give a discount to people who were already occupying slips instead of having them move to pay a full rate? And then thirdly, I'd like to understand why that, why that resolution was never renewed in 2020, yet those rates were still given to uh Belmar Marina people and why those slips were never made available to the general public. There was no advertising on as is slip rates. Every time we get a lease renewal at the marina, you get a copy of the, the rate resolution attached to the lease agreement. There was no indication that there was any as is slip rates uh that were available to the general public. So again, I'm not accusing the council or the mayor of doing anything wrongdoing, but you guys have a job to investigate things that were done wrong in the past and I hope you would put some effort in investigating this because it seems like there's a lot of money out there that should have gone to the taxpayers and should have gone to the coffers of of Belmar that, that wasn't. That's all.
I could tell you this, that uh it was talked about at a Harbor Commission meeting but uh and it was, there was slips that were in unrentable condition. Either they had broken pilings, low water that needed to be dredged and we made the decision to say, okay, they could be half price slips if somebody wanted to use those slips because they were unrentable. We did that to collect enough money to start working on repairing those other slips. Uh so the money that we took in, which was about $20,000 on those slips just this year alone, we are gonna start working on replacing the pilings and trying to get that dredged out so that they become off the undesirable slip list. Now, as far as people taking them, they were available to anyone, anyone that that wanted one of those slips. If they felt that their, their boat could be in one of those slips and they could deal with that slip, they had the right to do that. Now, as far as resolutions being done, uh as long as we don't change the rates, we don't have to, we don't have to uh do the resolution for rates every year is, unless we're changing the rate.
I, that's, that's not a precedent that's been set in the past.
Well, whether it's a precedent or not, because I checked with our CFO and she says absolutely not. You don't have to do it every year unless you're changing rates, so-
The resolution you passed says the rates are only for 2019. It says nothing about 2020.
Well-
And as a precedent, the Harbor Commission and- And as a precedent, the Harbor Commission and the mayor and council renew marina rates every year, whether or not the rates change or not. That's what's been done in the past, and that's a precedent.
Well, you know that, I don't.
I just don't know, Mark, if you were offering, if you were renting a hotel and you had rooms that were at a discounted rate, yet you still had rooms that you could charge a full rate for, why would you ever charge a discounted rate?
Well, if the room is if the room is damaged or it doesn't have a bed and somebody wants to rent it for a cheaper rate, they can. But we're talking about the boat slips. It was talked about at a Harbor Commission. It was brought up that we we had these undesirable slips and we wanted to get some money to repair them, and that that was the decision that that we had made at that time.
I I understand, Mr. Mayor, but I think it I think A, it was unwise.
You might not like it, but that was the decision that was made.
I think it was I think it was extremely unwise.
That's your opinion, Mark. That's your opinion.
They were not advertised on the website. The only way you would know about them would be looking at the meeting minutes and finding that the resolution was passed. I don't see any other means that was able to communicate this to the public. You would think if you were trying to rent rates or rent slips to fill the marina, you would make those available to the public and advertise them. That wasn't the case. And I find it very unsettling that several of the people who got those slips happened to be borough officials.
Not all. There's other a lot of those people.
You're right. You're right. There were maybe three or four other people. But the fact that you created one of those slips.
There's 12 other people that took them.
Or you created one of those slips for someone who was already renting or occupying that slip but not paying for it seems a little suspicious. And I think you should look into it. And again, I'm not accusing you of doing anything, but I think that you may have people within your administration still who aren't playing by the rules.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looking for hands. And three, two, one, I see no more hands. Oh, wait, we got a last second hand coming on in. Up, up, there you go. We got a couple more people, stand by. And we'll go to Maria, stand by. Says Maria, last name starts with R. Not using the updated Zooms, you can try to come back, and we'll let you in again. One moment, Maria, try to come back and sign in, and you might be able to get back in. Hold on, please. Okay, going to a Tom. And Tom, sir, go ahead, please.
Hello, everybody, hear me?
Yes, Tom, how are you?
Fine, thanks. Tom Volker, 527 8th Avenue. I want to thank the police chief and the officers for the attention being given to the amazingly loud traffic on 8th Avenue. It's probably been happening on 16th Avenue and any of the major entrances into town. I understand 70 summonses were issued, and and that's tremendous attention given to a a real problem. One, my question is, Mark, or any of the council, can we do anything else? Is there, do you feel you feel we're making progress? Is there anything else we can do? We're not, we're not telling people, we don't want them to come. You know, we want the visitors, but we're saying obey our rules, you know, when you do come. So, Mark.
We are talking with the police department right now because the the group is getting larger and larger, and it's becoming a problem. So we're discussing different options right now, you know, with our police department and business administrators. So hopefully, before they come again, we'll have some type of a plan in place to deal with some of the problems when they come here.
It's good to know, Mark. Is there any information as to when the summonses will be judged? When the courts will be back working on summonses?
They are working now. They they're still working Zoom. They're trying to get through as many as possible. It's a little, it's a little difficult, but they are working through it. They're working hard to try to get some of these summonses brought into the court. So hopefully later than sooner, but they are working hard to do it.
Thank you. On a different track tact here, when we have some money left over, could for the boardwalk, is there any way we consider shade pavilions? Someplace where a person can just sit on a bench and have a little cover. I've seen them in Ocean City. They don't seem to be very complicated. And I would be happy to help build one as a as a laborer. I wouldn't be any good as an architect. So I'd appreciate if you would keep that in your thoughts on plans that you might improvement you might make to the boardwalk at some point.
Okay, sure, we'll we'll keep that in our mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Maria, I see, we're going to come back to you. Let's give this a shot. Let's hope you're updated now. Stand by. Hold on, that went to Corey Vaxton. Hold on, Corey. Maria. Yes.
Okay, I'm Maria Rontanaro, 1246 Pine Tree Way.
Yes.
I just wanted to agree with some of the what Mark Levis was talking about. I just feel like transparency has been such a fundamental, I don't know, statement that you've been making throughout this administration. And yet, if there are some things that are unethical, we need, we have the responsibility to clean them up in town. I mean, we've got a lawyer right now who seems to be in trouble over ethical things. I know that this is, you know, something that you have spoken about at great length, that you want your administration to be ethical. And yet, we seem to be falling short in many areas. And so I would just really like you to consider maybe putting out advertising those slips again and seeing if they go to people, you know, who who aren't our town administrators and don't have positions of power here in town because it doesn't look right. And with that, I'll go. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And we have Gerald, one moment. Gerald, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Jerry Buckefusco, 409 50 Avenue, Belmar. I have a request or suggestion, again, in my quest for increasing transparency. And this has to do with the Bond Ordinance 2020-34. There are some questions, I think, that would be helpful for the public to have answers to for next week's or next the next meeting regarding the Bond Ordinance. And as I requested when the budget was was being proposed, I think it would be helpful if maybe one of the financial professionals attended the next meeting and maybe had a work session and answered some questions such as, what exactly is being purchased with this $450,000? Like, give the people the detail of what is being purchased. It seems like there is some detail because, as I read the ordinance, it refers to plans and specifications or requisitions on file with or through the borough CFO. So if there's anything that's there that departments or department heads are requesting, I think the residents have a right to know what is it that this bond ordinance is going to 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 buy? The second thing, question I think that should be answered is, in paragraph B, it talks about the usefulness of these, whatever it is, improvements, it looks like it's going to be vehicles, is is five years. So for me, the next logical question is, well, how long are these bonds going to be in existence? I mean, hopefully, you know, if you're borrowing money for something and the lifespan is only five years, that the loan will only be for five years. And I think it would be nice to have someone in the financial realm explain or at least confirm that that's what's going to happen. The other thing that I noticed in paragraph D is that it's probably, it may cost up to $40,000 to borrow the $425,000. Now, again, I think that might be something that the residents and taxpayers would like an explanation on. You know, they talk about how much of that is interest? How much is that going to legal fees? You know, what's the breakdown of that $40,000? And and lastly, and this has to go with transparency also, and also the the website, which I think has improved. But a question I always have is, why in in paragraph C, it states that a supplemental debt statement is required, right, by the local bond law? Yet, time after time, bond ordinances are posted, and there's no supplemental debt statement with it. Okay, you can have the best website in the world. If people are not posting those documents to the website, well, then you're not doing anything for transparency. I had to request the supplemental debt statement yesterday, and I got it today. That should be something that I think the the financial people should put along with the bond ordinance, since it's required by law. And it would be nice, I think, in the next meeting to have the CFO or someone in our finance department explain the supplemental debt statement. Because I think a lot of people don't understand it, and I think it would go a long ways to letting people know exactly how much debt the town is in and how much debt we've accumulated since the first of the year. Okay, so that's my request. If we can do that, I think it would go a great way to helping people understand what bond ordinance is all about. The second topic I had is just simply, a while ago, two meetings ago, we had ordinance 2020-33, which had to do with the confidential assistant title. And I think at that time, we were looking at, or you were looking at getting some kind of guidance from the Department of Civil Service or the Civil Service Commission. And I'm curious to see if if anything came back about that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
We're still.
I'm sorry.
We're still waiting.
Okay, what 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 troubles me a little bit about this, though, is if you, we have a person who I assume is already on the payroll in a title that is problematic, number one. Number two, there has been no approval by the council for either the title or the person who was filling that title. Okay, if you look at our own ordinances in ordinance 212, it says Part E very clearly, personnel subordinate to the director of a department shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the Borough Council. To my knowledge, there has been no advice or consent of the council as to the hiring of this person, regardless of what the title is. So, you know, my rhetorical question is, how is this person on the payroll? Okay, when when there's been no approval for this?
He's in part-time status until we straighten it out.
I don't know that it matters if he's a part-time or full-time. When I requested the.
You mean, every person that we have here I have to approve? Well, we have a lot of part-time people in the summertime, and I do not approve. We do not approve them.
Well, when I requested the list of DPW employees and their salaries, he was listed as a confidential assistant, and his annual salary was listed at $83,000. Is that not correct?
Not right now. He's in part-time status right now until we straighten it out.
Okay, and is that why he doesn't have a labor agreement either? Because I also requested his employment contract.
That's correct. Until we straighten all this out, we're not going to give him any kind of an agreement, and we're waiting for civil service to give us an answer. With this COVID, it's taking a while. So as soon as we get it, we'll we'll straighten it out.
Okay, so how many hours does he work a week?
I have no idea.
Well, I thought you appointed him.
I didn't appoint him. He's in part-time status right now.
Okay, for who?
So I have no, I don't know every employee's hours.
Well, his boss is sitting there. Why don't we ask him?
No, we're not going to ask him.
Why not?
We're not going to ask him.
Somebody should know how many hours he works. You know what? I'll just ask it tomorrow in an Oprah request.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then they're going to Maureen Powers, one moment. Eugene Kramer, sir, he's going to have someone else go. One second. Give someone else a shot. Start. And Maureen.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hi, Maureen Powers. I live on Main Avenue on the Ocean Block, and I have a pretty serious mobility issue. And I have not been to the boardwalk since the the benches were removed. Because once I get to the boardwalk, I really can't walk. Can they come back, please?
Until until the social distancing, until the social distancing order is lifted, no, we really can't because it's create, it creates a problem for social distancing.
May I bring a folding chair up and sit on the boardwalk?
I think some of the people have done that, as long as it doesn't create a problem for us. I don't see, I don't see a problem with it, but.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. And I really think that I'm probably not the only person. I really think that, you know, you know, you were able to open the playgrounds. It would be nice if people in my situation were able to use the boardwalk again. But I appreciate your comment on the chair. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eugene Kramer, coming to you, sir. Kramer.
Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Yes, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, back on the 5G wireless consumer electronics coverage at the beachfront, and actually all in town. Right now, we have existing 5G small cells, and they're all paying rent to property owners. One at 917 Main Street, 601 Main Street, and 1,000 Ocean Avenue. By the way, the small cells on Main Street are approximately 1,000 feet apart. The 21 small cells that were proposed by Verizon on Ocean Avenue, that would work out to be about 350 feet apart or one each block. Actually, thus far, with all of this telecommunications stuff, Belmar has been able to keep it out of the public right of way. And Ocean Avenue should be no different. In other words, we have we have private property owners that are willing to host the cellular cellular equipment. And perhaps the the borough might be better off here. Once you get into the public right of way, I mean, it's Monmouth County Route 18. You open it up to the Wild West. Everybody's going to be putting up everything, and you've lost control. However, in the town here, I don't see any reason why we we can't build on existing infrastructure instead of building new infrastructure. And actually, that's Verizon's motto, is to build on the backbone of of its fiber. And you don't have to go back that many years. I guess it was late 90s. Belmar, fiber fiber optic, we're loaded with fiber optic. We have spools of fiber, you know, those black cables hanging off the poles and and more than enough fiber to to build a wireless network without building any additional major infrastructure. If you just took a look at Ocean, and by the way, I'm not sure what the price was on the borough. I thought it was, if my memory serves me correct, they're paying the borough about $1,500 a month. Maybe Mr. Kirkenbaum can can confirm that number. But why not? Why not let the development of the small cell network develop in a more organic way? And this is what's going on in the big cities. middle of the street there for cellular. I think the public right of way itself should be reserved where, where nothing, no other location could be used. Plus the fact that, why not give the property owners in Belmar an opportunity to have a rent payer on their property? And it doesn't take that much. I don't think we've, certainly what was shown to us is not stealth. In fact, it's anything but stealth. I have seen pictures of other places that have big subdivisions that have put cellular on top of flagpoles on, on people's lawns. Even yourself, Mayor Walsifor, you have a flagpole on your property. There's no reason why cellular equipment couldn't be just, you know, put on top of that like an eraser, or, or you get it, you get a, a new flagpole. And we have, by the way, we have a lot of flagpoles in town, not quite as many as Spring Lake, but just riding around town recently, I've been looking at flagpoles. All of these are potential sites for mounting small cell equipment. All you need is the fiber drop, some AC electric, you know, they use less electric electricity than a, than a small room air conditioner. Anyhow, if you just take a look at, at Ocean Avenue, I mean, you start off with, with the Belmar Fishing Club, they, they have a flagpole out in front. You have Schroeder Park, a triangular park on, on Ocean Avenue that's owned by the borough. And by the way, I think there's an unused pole on that property. The other thing, facilities that you have, you have the Taylor Pavilion, you've got Silver Lake Park across the street. You've got the South Monmouth Regional Storage Authority at Eighth and Ocean. And by the way, they have backup power, and they also have an existing power there that they use for their radiator system.
Mr. Kramer, if I could just stop you for a minute? I mean, all these, all these ideas are really good, and we've been going back and forth with Verizon on just these issues. The problem is, they tell us that they're looking to put these from Sandy Hook all the way to Cape May for their 5G networking system. I don't understand the difference between why it has to be on Ocean Avenue with these small cells compared to putting them on flagpoles and doing all the different things that you said. We have been trying to get them to do that, but what they explained to us is, with this 5G network, they have to do this. Now, we, we said, if, if it's going to be giving, if we have to do it, we looked at every intersection to keep it at the head of every intersection to try to keep it away from people's houses. I don't like it as much as anybody else, believe me. But with, because they are a utility and because they have the federal laws behind them, somewhere along the line, this is all going to come. Now, we could sit back and say, hey, we're not going to do it until all the other towns do it, but whoever sets the standard, and they, they have the right to go to 50 feet under the law, 50-foot high, so we want to make sure that that's not going to happen. We don't want poles that are 50-foot high. So we come up with the idea to say, okay, well, let us take a look at putting that at the head of every intersection with a, with another light pole to light up the intersection. Now, what we did last, last meeting was to take a look at what they were going to present to us. We're still in negotiations with everything. We haven't came to an agreement on anything yet, but that's why I had the attorneys discuss what, what the rights are for them and for us tonight. So we're still working on it. It's a work in progress. I totally agree with you that I wish we could put them in other different places that we don't have to look at them, but that's something that we're working on.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you keeping us informed as to what's actually going on. I can tell you one thing for sure, the FCC never said that 5G had to be within the public right of way. And I think what you'll find out, if you take a look at the cities that, bigger cities that have already installed 5G, just very little, that's it, within the public right of way. And I'm one for conserving right of way.
I am too.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I hope, and by the way, I do appreciate the Horizon, you know, Verizon coming in and, and putting their plans in front of people and generating, you know, discussion and so on. I didn't want to, I didn't want to pick them to pieces here, although I do have to say this, we do have fiber hanging up and down this town all over the place, and their motto is to build on the backbone of their fiber, and I think that's what we would like to see them do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, last call for hands. And no more hands.
Can I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.